Mr. Jeroski, can you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Mrs. Merrill.
President.
Mr. Steigel.
President.
Mr. Arcuri.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
President.
And Mr. Berquist is excused this evening.
In honor of all of our veterans today, let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding the 2018 budget amendment. Mr. Jeroski?
Yeah, I'll call.
You want to wait until Mr. Lauer's back?
That would probably be wise. We're going to call this the order and actually swear people in, yes.
Okay, so why don't we hold that in bands?
There he is.
There he is.
We're just moving on to the minutes. A few aren't here.
We have a public hearing tonight?
Yes. We'll wait for you, Mr. Lauer, to get back to his seat. And we will commence with the public hearing. Mr. Lauer, proceed, please.
The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to present to council and to accept testimony from residents concerning a proposed amendment to the 2018 budget. As councils aware, the budget is a plan, and the plan is subject to amendments, there are a number of items that require amendments, and that's principally the result of unforeseen changes in expenditures. What I did was to group these together, and I thought I could go through these and explain what the purpose of each of those are. So the first set of changes relate to expenditures for special projects. One of the things that Peterstownship does for the Character Counts program is to handle their bookkeeping. Those funds are actually budgeted by the township. This year, Character Counts is sponsoring a program known as Rachel's Challenge, and as a result of that, their expenditures are actually higher than they've been in the past. At the same time, to offset the cost of that program, they have obtained support from the community, which offsets that additional expenditure. There are a series of changes related to expenditures under the category of general Most of these represent small changes in the amount that was anticipated on being spent. They are all offset by savings in other categories. So with regard to the accounting services, this is the year where we do a study of the impact of post-retirement benefits. That amount was not budgeted for, and so therefore needs to be amended. In terms of contracted and other services under information technology, particularly with regard to the other services, this item covers expenditures related to internet service as well as licenses for software. Those expenditures are actually about $10,000 more than what we budgeted for. In terms of the municipal building, all of the public works salaries are aggregated together so that in fact, and then assigned back to programs. In this particular case, the Public Works Department has spent more on building maintenance, which would be any of the buildings in our campus that were here than was anticipated. As you can see, we've offset those increased expenditures by savings that were realized that are engineering and legal services. One of the areas of expenditure that is not offset is the increase in salaries for police community relations as well as investigations. These relate to expenditures as a result of people terminating service with Peterstownship and as a result of being paid out accrued vacation and accrued earned sick leave. The thing to keep in mind with regard to these expenditures is that Peterstownship actually, on an ongoing basis, funds its post-retirement benefits, so the money's been set aside already to offset these expenses. Again, in the Fire Department, each year we assign, we look at the cost of salaries and overtime in aggregate and assign them to programs. As the year goes on, it could be that money that was budgeted for fire suppression or fire prevention may offset each other, and that's what you see here. These adjustments, there is an increase in the payroll, it's just that they're assigned to different programs. In the Planning Department, one of the things that occurred, we had two building inspectors leave, and as a result of that, we had some duplication in building inspectors and overlaps, and that's caused that additional expenditure. At the same time, we did not spend the money that we had anticipated for the inside, the Planning Department, and so those two amounts offset each other. The same thing's true in the Public Works Department. It isn't that there's an increase in the amount of salaries. What it is, is that the programs that were assigned to change throughout the year. The one significant item that there is not an offset for is, of course, the additional funds expended to acquire the Rolling Hills Country Club. The intention is that sometime next year, that there'll be a bond issue, and that the township will in essence reimburse that expenditure and return those funds to the general fund. And then finally, there was a small difference in the library use services salaries, and it's been offset by a reduction in maintenance services. So in essence, that's what it is. It is not a significant sum of money, and like I said, for the most part, each of these are offset by reductions somewhere else in the budget. So if anybody has any questions?
Are there any questions from council?
Just the net increase, sir?
Well, the net re-increase really comes down to that $1,153,850.
If you wash that out, though, we're under budget.
Yes, yes.
I ran the numbers in my head as we went through.
Well, no, no, well, it's not only that, but you know, what you're looking at here are offsets to places where we are over budget. The fact of the matter is, if you look at the 2018 budget, revenues greatly exceed that which were projected, and expenditures overall are less, what you would normally see in a Peterstownship budget, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Any questions or comments from the audience?
I believe that we close the public hearing. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Public hearing is closed.
So we'll now move on to reg.
That was a six.
Well, you know what? I did have a couple of things that I wanted to bring to council's attention, and I realize these weren't on the agenda, but Irma Gregor, who was a fixture in Peterstownship.
We're off the record, right, Rob?
Yeah, I know. Yes.
I know, I just wanted to make sure I didn't want to pay too much for him.
Irma Gregor, who was really a fixture in Peterstownship and involved in lots of different community activities, just recently passed away, you know, the, one of the things that she was known for is she had a program, a senior perspective that ran on our cable channel. She also was a driving force behind the Venetia here in each society and was the individual who was responsible for scheduling all the programs there. I got to know Irma when I first moved here, and nothing ever changed with Irma as she got older. She was, she was a person you had a very difficult time saying no to, and like I said, I don't know of anybody who cared more for this community than Irma did, so she's going to be missed.
Yeah, we have fond memories of field trips to her farm, which she used to invite the school chile to every year when we went out, when we were in elementary school, so.
The other one that I just wanted to mention to you, last week, Tim O'Brien, as part of the novel November, it's a program sponsored by Peterstownship Library, did a presentation at the Peterstownship High School. The program was attended by about 500 people. Not only was Tim O'Brien a thoughtful, powerful speaker, one of the things that impressed me was the tremendous job that the library staff had done in organizing that event. And this is a program that comes to the library by virtue of the efforts of the Peterstownship Library Foundation, and they really are to be commended for a job of them there, so.
Anything else, Paul?
Lauer is absolutely right. And one of the things I think that that shows is how important Peterstownship Library is not only to our residents, but surrounding communities, not only in Washington County, but people even in Allegheny County. So I concur, this is another example of a great program.
Anything else, Paul?
That's it.
Moving on, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of October 22, 2018. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve those minutes of October 22.
Do you have a motion in the second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Special reports, there are none. Now we move on to the audience comment section. This is a time where anyone in the audience can comment on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak about a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we will move on to unfinished business, of which there also is none. So we will move on to new business. First item under new business is appointment of a member to the Peterstownship Youth Commission with a term to expire on December 31, 2018.
I'd like to move that we appoint Christina Grasso to the Peterstownship Youth Commission with a term expiring December 31, 2018.
Second.
Do you have a motion in the second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay.
I just wanted to say that all three candidates were eminently qualified to be on this board. Maybe we may have another opening or two by the end of the year, and I don't believe that we would need to re-advertise.
Okay, okay, and I think there's probably a good chance by the time we have the reorganization meeting that there may well be two openings on that board, so.
Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is waiver of hiring policy for full-time police officers.
That's Chief Grimes to come to help address this, but what we'd like to be able to do, we have a part-time officer, Ed Walker, who we would like to promote to full-time status. When we had written up, when I had written up this report, I had also suggested that Officer Johnson be considered for transition to a full-time status. There's been a change in his personal status, and so therefore, he's not available to do that at this time. So what we would like to be able to do is to get council to waive the requirement that we go through a formal testing process for a full-time officer, and based upon Mr. Walker's history as well as performance since he's been here, is to allow us to transition into a full-time status.
If I could just clarify, we're not essentially rewriting the policy or changing our practice. We're talking specifically about the circumstances that he and this particular officer, who is willing to move up from part-time to full-time, and who brings a high level of expertise that has benefited operating the department.
That's right. This is simply a departure from our existing regulation with regard to hiring, and in point of fact, I think our, in general, our regulation has served us well. And I, but at the same time, I think it would be foolhardy when you have somebody like this not to be willing to amend what we do to be able to accommodate that, so.
Well, I mean, you know, I'm for, we have his professional experience here, besides working here, you know, he's a 20-year state trooper, so I don't have a problem, I don't want to make a thing to do all the time.
Yeah, it should not be a problem.
Under the circumstances that are presented, I have no problem, and I'd make a motion to waive the required qualifications for full-time police officers, just for the purpose of transitioning Officer Johnson. Walker, pardon me, to full-time status. Have I read a wrong one?
Do you have a motion in the second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay.
Mr. Cozer, while we have Chief Grimes here, there were two other things that I just wanted to bring council up to date, that if they had questions for Chief Grimes, they could ask those, and these would be something we'd be considering at some future date, so.
Come on up, chief.
The first is an observation that the chief has had with regard to the intersection of Sugar Camp and Churchill Road.
Is this not the state portion, correct?
It is.
Yes and no.
Coming up, Sugar Camp, this is, there's no stop sign here. It's a three-way stop. This is, in my estimation, a very dangerous intersection because the people, especially if you're not from the area, either of these, any of these other intersections or points in the intersection, don't understand, and that person's not going to have a stop sign, especially if they're coming up the hill and turning left. It can be problematic. We have had 16 accidents there in the last several years, all of which have been reportable accidents, but nonetheless, they're accidents. And I think it's only a matter of time before we see something that's more critical. So I think there was a proposal a week or so ago that I was asked to go and look, was it not a street lane would help that intersection? I think that might help, but that is not going to be the solution here to prevent the accidents from occurring there, so.
Mr. Lauer, do we know why there isn't a stop sign there? Is it because of the topography and?
This is, this was the same thing that you had at Tiana Trail. You know, the thought was at the time that because of this hill here, it would be a problem in the wintertime getting up, and I would argue the same thing that I argued at Tiana Trail, where that may be true for half a dozen times during the winter. The fact of the matter is, the other 360 days out of the year, when you're sitting here, this is a challenge getting around here quick enough, and when you're coming up here, you can't see that this person isn't stopping and making this turn.
Especially if, as most people are unaware, that stick on the left side of the column is a turn signal. They don't seem to use that. And so if you're sitting here, they don't have a turn signal on, you're starting at the intersection, that's where problems occur.
So do you think signage, if they did signage that said three-way stop or?
There is, there is signs that says three-way stop, but the other thing we know is people don't read those signs.
Yeah, well, we're usually coming up the hill and bear a lamp with that stop instead of, I don't know, that is that all the time.
Well, and I don't know that it's here, but it's here, here.
It is, it's on the three, yes, I don't.
Yeah, it's not on the hill coming up.
So what's the proposal?
So the proposal would be four-way stop.
But is that ours to put on, or is that state part of the road?
I would have to check to find out what we need to do to be able to do that.
You're going to have to assert warrants, Mike.
Well, I think there's no question, it would be the warrants, and if the accidents are as, the chief is saying that that alone would allow you to do that.
My mom got a big partner to see that intersection.
Well, we had to go to the state when we put the stops at Bebop, Frobe, and Bower Hills, so if we can verify that. But I would have to ask the question, since we're talking about that, we've had people call and talk to us about Turkeyfoot and Churchill. What is the, do you know the statistics related to that?
I've not run the ones.
It's a very similar, it's a very similar problem.
It is similar, but I will tell you this, having drive that every day, you have a better shot at seeing what's happening in that intersection. You do not because of that vertical curve coming out of Sugar Camp. On the other one, you can actually, from where, no matter which way you're at, you can at least see what's going on.
See, I would have to disagree, because if you're coming Turkeyfoot and straight across to Trax, the left, depending on what time of the year, the vegetation is a problem.
Well, I think we need to focus on the intersection, it's on the.
Well, there was a question, if you're going to the state, my only question was, I brought it up because if you're going to go ask, perhaps we should ask them about both.
I agree with that, because Turkeyfoot's always been, one of the pleasures of going to Trax Park, is going up there and just closing your eyes as you go up.
Well, let us do this, then. This will have to come back to council anyhow. Let us at least explore what we can do, and we'll get back to you on that. The other thing that I wanted to talk about, and it just recently happened, and this has existed inside of our code ordinance for longer than I've been here, we have a restriction that says, "We designate where you can hunt in Peterstownship." We do not have the authority to do that now, nor did we ever have the authority to do that, and the reason it comes up is that somebody from out of state apparently read our code and said, "Show me the map where I can hunt in Peterstownship." And I think we need to repeal that section of our ordinance. We don't have jurisdiction in this area.
Yeah, actually, it was an out, somebody from Michigan who moved to the area, went online, read our ordinance, and it says in the ordinance that he can come to the Peterstownship Police Station and view the map on where he's permitted to hunt. You know, I think, if I remember correctly, 20 years ago, there actually was a map that had a designated line.
Yes.
Peterstown, yeah.
Yeah. But, you know, if you think about how much the township has changed since then, I would be frightened to tell people where they could hunt in Peterstownship at this point, because I think the areas are somewhat restricted, it can't be defined easily by a line that...
If you have landowner permission, you get three houses, you have permission to hunt in their backyards.
But I just think we would be a lot better off letting the game commission, since that is, you know, who has jurisdiction in that area, make that determination on us.
Particularly if what we're relying on is a map that was from 30 years ago.
It's worse than that. It says that the map will be adjusted year to year, and so we would literally be drawing this map each year, and I don't think anybody here is in a position to be able to do that.
Well, so how would the game, not to disagree, I don't know if you can do it, but how would the game commission be the one to answer?
Because the game commission has rules with regard to hunting with, you know, distances from structures and things like that.
And gaining permission from landowners and such. The only ones we could really regulate are township property.
So the deer management program that apparently goes out to property owners, am I presuming that, and they ask property owners?
Correct.
If they can hunt on their property?
Correct.
Or they're invited by property owners?
That's correct.
How annoyed they are about 40.
And then we get a designated hunter or hunters, depending on the size of the land tract, to hunt that.
I want to think with a couple of parcels that we have, potentially doing what you're talking about, Peter's Lake Park, there would be areas within it that you could legally hunt?
I don't think so.
I don't think you'd want anybody hunting in park property.
Well, there's like, I don't, if you rely strictly on the rules that the game commission has.
Again, that would be private, yeah.
Hunting in township property.
Township property. Through the deer management program, we regulate who hunts there.
And the method of which they hunt.
Yes. Yeah, because one of the problem, right, one of the problems you get into here in Washington County is that you're still permitted to hunt with a rifle in Washington County, so we're able to regulate that to some extent through the deer management.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know that if you just leave it to the rules that the game commission has, you'd be able to restrict single projectile rifle hunting in the park.
I understand, but like today, what I brought up is this particular ordinance that addresses the fact that we would control a map and designate where people can hunt. We may want to look at a specific ordinance in relation to how we manage hunting on township property.
Yes.
But that particular ordinance is.
Why don't we just have the solicitor draft something that repeals the current provision, and then maybe we can include a provision that relates to public lands, township lands, and maybe limit it to only through whatever our program is or.
Archery. Well, I think that's what you want.
Is it currently just archery?
Yes.
If we have no ordinance and we're therefore silent on that, will that create a problem?
No, because I would argue right now, our ordinance is invalid, and it's the rules of the state of Pennsylvania that apply.
Or is your question, could somebody walk out and hunt on township property? I guess that's another question. They're legally allowed to be there as citizens, so I think we probably should have something in place. I don't think they can, but.
I don't think they can either.
The mechanism of repealing, maybe we should just add something that just addresses the park and not where we don't have to deal with it again, hopefully.
We can talk with the game commission and maybe draft something up that is within.
Yeah, it might be, maybe there's just not a lot anyway, I think Kerry doesn't think that.
I can't, but I would assume that it would be up to the township to.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Well, it would be up to the township to regulate what you can do on public land.
I guess the only question I would have would be on private land with a high-power rifle, when you're in Peterstown, they're bull that goes pretty far.
But on private land, I don't know that we can regulate.
And I think that falls under the same.
As long as they're within, you know, they're up within 200 feet or 200 yards of the house, or within.
Yeah, it's pretty.
It's actually pretty difficult to find a place.
But I have another question, since I live in this situation. So private land would be exempt if I was a private land owner and wanted to say, "Come hunt."
Oh, it's still calling the game commission regularly.
Yes, right. Posted no hunting. Unless you have permission from the local authority structure.
Well, the farmer's.
Yeah, so that works.
So as an HOA that has a lot of property, where there are a lot of deer because they're building everything around us, are you saying that then it would be up to the HOA to put some rule in place if one of our residents wanted to go out in the backyard and start hunting?
The state's there already, but I forget, there's a couple hundred feet from structure, I believe. But you don't, I wonder, I thought Allegheny County, they have that, you can only use shotguns or slugs.
Rifle slugs.
Is that because of the?
No, it's because of the density of development.
Right, but who, is that the state?
That's the state, that's the game commission.
Right, even in the state game lands, you have to be a certain distance in the property if there's houses and.
If the HOA, I believe, if the HOA owns property, they could post that property.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, it might, it might make sense to make sure people know, because personally, for me, I would want, I have a third of an acre, I would want that posted behind me, because I wouldn't want anybody back there.
Well, they can't trespass on your land.
And they have to be 150 yards from the structure or the road. With the road. With the bow, not so much.
Yeah, and they still would have to get you permission, they can't come on your land, whether you posted it or not.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just, again, we're not talking about HOAs, so I'm just trying to think.
Yeah, that makes sense. I'll look at it when we put something together. It's not why you're always asking your husband to dress up like a reindeer or a horse, to go out and get some firewood?
No, I love my horse.
Is that it, chief?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Third item on the agenda is approved.
It's a good thing Mr. Berquist isn't here.
Next item on the agenda is approval for recording purposes of the DeLalo-Zidell subdivision number one, as shown on drawings prepared by HMT and Associates dated 9/13/18 for David A. E., and Alice C. DeLalo, and Daniel J. and Laura Connor-Zidell.
So this is a simple subdivision, taking a parcel of land from one property owner and transferring it to another, doesn't create any new lots. The current two lots look like this. What's highlighted in red shows the lines that.
What's highlighted in red shows the lines that are being removed. The lines being removed, what you end up with is two lots that looks like, like this.
I move that we approve the subdivision for recording purposes of the Delalo-Zidel property as described and prepared by HMT Associates.
I have a motion in a second and further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is approval for recording purposes of the Peters Township, Peters Township School District subdivision plan, as shown on drawings prepared by HRG, dated November 2nd, 2018.
So, the drawing that is being projected there is, shows the subdivision of the property. It's divided into two equal parcels of 90.4 acres. The line that separates them is here. The right-of-way for the road passing through, as well as the right-of-way associated with the realignment of East McMartin Road is shown as well, so.
I did have a clarifying question. Because of the realignment of the road, is that why the towaway bridge is less than in the beginning? Because the road then moves in too?
Well, you have a couple of things happening. I mean, the, if you looked at the total size of the parcel, this right-of-way is taken out, so this becomes a right-of-way for the township, so that they can maintain the road. So, if you looked at the total acreage that was in it, what was acquired, that's why it's less, and then you have these right-of-ways down here. And then there was a small parcel up here that was purchased that this road now passes through, that now becomes part of the entire parcel, so.
But that was, the school districts originally, that was never part of the entire package?
Well, it's going to be now because the road is going to pass through this way, and one of the things that is going to happen is that the township's going to assume some of the responsibility for this piece of property now.
Okay, that was part of my other question. I know they bought that separately after the fact.
Yeah.
I guess my only other question is, in the event that the state doesn't approve our design, theoretically, we'll have to re-subdivide again?
Yes, that would be true, but I am very confident that that's not going to be the case. We're, in fact, we're making real progress with these property owners down here in terms of getting the releases, and to me, that's always been what the challenge was going to be, is, you know, getting the releases, and the people down here have been very cooperative and understanding about what we're trying to achieve for the community, so.
Any further questions or comments from council?
I'll make a motion that we approve for recording purposes, the township slash Peters Township School District subdivision plan, as shown on the drawings prepared by HRG, dated November 2nd, subject to any terms and conditions that might be imposed or proposed on it by the planning commission.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is award a contract under the South Hills Council of Government's Cooperative Purchasing Program for Gasoline and Diesel Fuels.
So, the South Hills Area Council Government's Purchasing Alliance annually bids contracts for gasoline and diesel fuel for its members. The way this is done, it's an increment over a benchmark price. This year, as in years past, Glassmere Fuel Services is below dinner, and it's our recommendation that a contract be awarded to Glassmere Fuel Services.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bid and award the Glassmere Fuel Services income for the gasoline and diesel.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is approval of adjustments to the scope of work related to the design of Rowan Hills Drive.
I will start this, we may need Mark's assistance to take this all the way through, but when we entered into a contract with HRG, the first thing in their project was to look at two alternatives for this intersection. One was a roundabout, and one was simply a signalized intersection. To HRG's credit, this third alternative developed, and it really was not part of the scope to examine this or engineer for it. And it turns out that that probably, and there's no question about it, is the best solution to that problem. So, that caused HRG to do work that otherwise they would not have been required to do. There were some items where, on the flip side, that the scope of work described that we thought would be required and turned out not to be. And so, the bottom line is that there's a net adjustment that's being approached to the contract, RFP proposed, and the amount of $18,400 for work that went beyond the original scope of the project.
Do you have anything you want to add to that, Mark?
That was a good synopsis. I mean, as council's aware, there's just a lot of moving parts to this project, and I tried to summarize some of those in a memo in your docket. You know, we try to anticipate everything that's going to be needed during the RFP process, but as Mr. Lauer said, the particular alternative that's being pursued right now wasn't even contemplated at that time. So, that, trying to drive this forward through the PennDOT process and keep everything moving, you know, we had them go ahead and do the design on this, and they're about, probably I'd say about 75% done, you know, as council's aware, we have permits into Washington County Conservation District, Southwest Regional Office of DEP, and PennDOT District 12 at this point. So, we're in the middle of all this, and now's a good time to give an accounting of the credits and extras that are due. So, all that's kind of summarized in the memo. If there's any specific questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I do have a question about the, I was worried when you say, this may not be the one and only change. I agree that they need to be paid for the work they did. Do you have any realistic expectation of what else might happen? Like, you referred to the sign-off from the property owners. Are they getting them, so they, is the work...
We are.
Mark and I are using our charm to get those.
Our good looks, too. Yeah, yes.
Need to get cookies from Mrs. Coates.
Yeah.
But, as Mr. Lauer said, we're actually making very good progress in that regard. We don't have all of them yet, so I can't say, you know, with 100% certainty that there won't be an adjustment needed because of that. The other thing is, you know, we do have outside agencies reviewing this and responsible to issue permits, so you almost like never know what's going to happen. I mean, we've been through one round of comments already with the state, well, PennDOT. There were no showstoppers. There's one that might have a slight tweak on the design, but we're trying to work through that currently. So, I just want to make council aware that, you know, I don't think there's going to be an adjustment, but it's always possible based on the comments we get from outside agencies.
Including DEP.
Yes.
I was explaining what you mean.
Any further comments or questions from council?
No, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize an adjustment to the scope of work for HRG for the design of the Rowan Hills driveway, with an increase in the cost by $18,400.
I'll second. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is approval of a change order number one for the 2018 road paving program.
Well, and as Mr. Zomitis has explained previously, we are subject to PennDOT regulations because of the use of liquid fuels money. PennDOT requires that there be a provision for price escalation for increases in asphalt prices. The amount that that has been calculated to be is $31,605.92, and that amount's been reviewed by the contractor as well, and he believes that it'd be an appropriate adjustment.
I'll make a motion that we approve change order number one for the 2018 road paving program.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any comments from council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is authorization to have the traffic engineer conduct traffic counts on Pleasant View Drive.
The traffic comming committee has received a valid petition to look at traffic comming on Pleasant View Drive. Actually, what they would be looking at is all of these roads and doing traffic counts. Traffic counts themselves are actually fairly minimal in cost. Based upon that, they would be coming back to make a determination as to whether or not the study area actually qualifies for traffic comming, so.
Any questions or comments from council?
No, I'll make the motion that we, council authorize the township manager to undertake traffic counts for the purpose of determining the potential traffic comming measures warranted on Pleasant View Drive.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is resolution adopting the Peters Township drug and alcohol policy.
Well, the council originally adopted a drug and alcohol policy on December 11th, 1995. As you can well appreciate, many things have changed since then. One of the things that I believe to be an important change in this policy is to create a category of safety-sensitive employees, which allows the township, to the extent that an employee is classified as safety-sensitive, to do a drug panel test that is, includes more drugs than just that which is permitted to be tested under the requirements for a CDL. I think it's, the policy's a bit better organized than previous, and I think it's easier for employees to understand. You know, we are very close to having an agreement with the firefighters with regard to their collective bargaining agreement, and they are, have indicated a willingness to incorporate this drug policy into that agreement and have all firefighters classified as safety-sensitive, so.
I move with the Doc Resolution 110118, which implements the revised Peters Township drug and alcohol policy.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further comments from council?
Yes, I'm sorry, I do have comments. I need to ask who wrote the policy and has this been reviewed by the local council?
This policy, we gather policy from neighboring communities, and I use that as a basis. This policy you see here has actually been drafted by myself, and it has been reviewed by our labor council.
My concern is that, I asked someone I know who's a safety expert about this, and I think there are some issues about the policy. I'm concerned, I don't know that it protects either the township fully or the employees fully, and there are some gaps because it doesn't define some of the things that you had defined in the other policy, like who are the safety-sensitive. You don't define who, you know, the screening people. There's some other things, and again, I could have possibly sat down and wrote this for you, but I would feel safer if we had an opportunity to have a little bit more clarification. One of the things, for example, and this is not related to the safety-sensitive, that it doesn't talk about who's training the people to recognize what's going on.
Well, actually, we just recently had training for all of our supervisors done by the state of Pennsylvania. But with regard to classifying people as safety-sensitive employees, for collective bargaining employees, that's a matter to be collectively bargained. And quite honestly, I would like to be able to extend that in, to include the police department, but that will not be able to be done until such time as there's collective bargaining to be done. So, that's a few years down the road. So, it's inside those contracts where you're going to find these.
So, are you saying that if we write the policy, we won't be able to apply to the police?
The policy does apply to the police, except that they are not subject now to random drug testing, but they are subjected to testing as a result of suspicion. And so, the policy in that regard applies to all employees, but the only people right now subject to random drug test are those who have commercial driver's license, and that's required by the U.S. Department of Transportation.
One of the other things that it doesn't really talk about, you referred to the township manager as the final arbiter, but there's no reference as to what happens if someone has a problem, no offense personally with you. How would that, would that thing go to council? Does that need to be put into the policy?
I don't believe that there needs to be an appeal passed with township manager.
No, and that can be your problem.
If I had the problem with drug and alcohol, is that what you're saying?
For someone who comes after you, obviously.
Yeah, most likely it won't be me, since I'm a teetotaler.
Well, Paul, you've been here long enough.
You could drive me to drink.
By now, it's probably not going to now.
You know what? I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know the answer to that question.
Again, I think the policy is extremely well-written and better than the original one from 20-some years ago. I just, I have, I'm not comfortable with everything that's in there right now, that's mine. And if everyone wants to vote for it, that's mine, but I'm going to vote for it because I would like to have a review.
But may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Why don't we just table this?
We can do that.
And have Mrs. Merrill supply to you, you know...
Any questions?
In the future, whatever questions or concerns she has, you can run it by the solicitor, and then we'll put it back on the agenda, and...
We can do that. I don't have a problem with that.
We'll be done then.
So, you want to draw your previous motion?
Yes, and make a motion that we just table this till next Monday.
We should have that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I second that motion to table.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is payroll and bills. I reviewed the payroll and bills. I find it to be in order, and I make a motion that we approve the same.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Six zero, Mr. Lauer. Correspondence, there is none unless you have anything, Mr. Lauer?
No.
Is there anyone in council that wants to make any comments with regard to any of the board minutes?
I have a question about the, for Mr. Zokadchaila, I was reading the planning commission minutes about Westbury Village down in Venetia, and I was reading the parking rec board minutes, and it occurred to me that I have seen no reference that Park and Rec has reviewed that plan or has talked about open space, and so I actually went back and looked at some of the other ones, and none of the plans that we've talked about, there's any reference in the parking rec minutes about them reviewing those, and I thought that was a matter of course for Park and Rec.
Yeah, Westbury will be looked at by Park and Rec again. All the other, all the other plans, like Brookwood Village, Brookwood Place, Jennifer Woods, have been looked at by Michelle.
So, Michelle only?
Yes.
And there's no reference to that in them?
Yes.
Okay, because you have that in the park, the board handbook, that the Park and Rec board is going to do that, so I'm a little confused.
I'll, I'll, I leave it up to Michelle as to how she handles that, so.
Okay, then it would be my recommendation that she weigh in on it in some way, or whatever.
Okay.
Because to me, first one, open space has been an issue in the new plans, and if she's saying it was finally rated, I'd love to, I think that we need to say that it was reviewed, and we need to know what that is.
Yeah, when it comes back, we will have something in writing from Park and Rec.
Thank you.
Anyone else with any comments or questions with regard to board minutes? May miscellaneous, Mr. Lauer?
No.
Any member of council have anything that they want to see placed on the next meeting agenda?
Of course I do.
Please proceed, Ms. Merrill.
Yeah, not on the next agenda, but I just wonder if sometime in the next couple meetings, this policy about the drug from 1995 and then the deer hunting thing, is there another set of policies that we, that council should be made aware of, or what is the status of those, if there is?
Well, there's a whole series of policies. I can get you copies of those if you want.
Well, if they're outdated, if they're 20 years old, I think we should have a plan for when they're going to be looked at. Then, I mean, obviously, issues have been coming up that we want to have a policy that's outdated.
That's why you were repealing something, because then we looked at the policies, it's...
Well, actually, with regard to that, in fairness to everyone, in... Well, actually, with regard to that, in fairness to everyone, and particularly Michael Silvestri, Michael has pointed this out on numerous occasions, but nobody's wanted to do anything with it, and I do just believe it needs to be repealed because I think it evokes the thought somebody has protection that they don't have, and it has rights that they don't have, and we shouldn't be doing that, but.
Thank you.
I like to have, we talked about this last week, about, I'd like to know what properties the township owns, like lots that could be resold and put back on the tax rolls. We had talked about it in the board, there's a.
There's a leak too.
Because it seems to me that if we're never going to use that property, that we should, considering that we're spending, you know, an inordinate amount of money to develop this park, and versions, that, you know, we should think about divesting ourselves of those assets.
Okay.
We do that.
And we have any update on the Courtney property?
I think we, we are out of bid for the demolition. Bids are going to be opened on December 4th.
December 4th.
And Mr. Courtney has, as of today, submitted new plans again.
Do you have an executive session?
Yeah, we have a chance to review.
Okay.
Yeah, we are.
Well, we can discuss that executive session.
Anyone else have anything for the good of the order?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Lewis?
We have a pending discussion relative to the commitment for bond issue for the development of the park. I would like that discussion include the concept of considering a design proposal for an aquatic facility as being part of the bond issue that we're currently thinking of. It's not a commitment to build the facility, but that's going to be a huge investment that this community's going to make. To make that decision, we need to have a further concept of what we will build and what it might cost.
So, based upon the last budget workshop, what our intention is to do is to submit to council a budget that in essence has a placeholder for a bond issue, and that at the beginning of next year, that we have a serious discussion as to what elements of that master plan are going to be incorporated, so that when we go out to borrow funds, that we're borrowing them to fund the project as council would like to do. One of the things that Mark and I have begun discussing is to try to understand a logical path for the development of the park, and how does the roadway and the aquatics facility and the picnic areas, how do you balance all of that in terms of coming up with a logical plan for the development of the area? So, we hope to have that in hand so that we can have a discussion with council as to what you want to do, you know, in the near term, so. But I see that happening, you know, in the winter or spring of next year, so.
Anyone else have anything for the good of the order? Meeting adjourned.
Executive session on a legal matter.